The committee in the hall is back from recess. Before we left for recess, the floor was given to Senator Telo Titigui.
Sijus Massey, Madam Chair. And thank you for the opportunity to look into this a little bit further. And I have no more questions. I had a good conversation with the author of the amendment and I'm good to go.
All right. Thank you, Senator Titigui. So now I'd like to recognize the proffered amendment for any closing statements.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And again, this is just a time to give, a timeframe to give the Department of Rev and Tax a little more flexibility in carrying out the program. So there is an application period of 30 days for all of the funds, the CARES Act money, to be encumbered for these qualified families. And the March 31st, 2021 extension will be for them to carry it out and fully make payment to all of the families. Sijus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. So are there any objections to this amendment? Seeing no objections, amendment passes. So I'd like to recognize Senator Titigui for your amendment.
Sijus Massey, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Madam Chair, my amendment is based on our discussions regarding ensuring that this program starts right away, that it doesn't bleed into the next year because of federal funds. Anytime there's a program, usually the case is whenever there's a federal program and funding that's expended or a program that's requiring a certain amount of time, it's usually 90 days. In order for the program to move forward, to pay, to make sure payments are paid out, they allow that 90 days. So what my amendment is going to do, Madam Chair, and I had the opportunity also to speak with Director of Rev and Tax, Mr. Shimizu, with regards to this amendment, and she doesn't see that there would be an issue with this. And my amendment, if it's on the drive right now, if it's, everybody has an opportunity to see the amendment? Okay, so I'll continue, Madam Chair. So the amendment is on Bill 392-35 LS, and it's on line 9 to 13, page 6. To the amendment, Section 3 of the bill to read. Section 4. Implementation Application Period. DRT shall have 15 working days from the effective date of the rules and regulations for the Azzuda Imanaguf Help for Families Program to implement the same. The application period for the, so the part that's underlined is the amendment. And then it continues on with its current language as the application period for eligibility for the Azzuda Imanaguf Help for Families Program shall end 30 business days after the date of implementation of the program. And then it reads, underlined, applications which are received after the application period will not qualify individuals for payment under this program. So in my amendment too, it says the effective date. The important is, importance of this is that usually normally rules and regulations if it comes to the legislature. And it has to go through a certification period. If the rules are not brought in front of the legislature to approve, then it could lapse into 90 days. However, that amendment was changed, that rule was changed, and a certification is required for that. But because this rules and regulation is going through the legislative process in a bill form, it still has to be signed by the governor. And once it's signed by the governor into law, then it becomes effective. The rules become into effect. So that's basically what my amendment does, is once it's upon effectuation of this legislation or the rules, the clock starts to tick 15 working days. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Titigui. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Senator San Agustin, you're recognized.
Very simple. If the author would yield to the question.
Senator Titigui, do you yield to Senator San Agustin's question?
If we're going to estimate that the governor will sign this thing, let's hypothetically say today, today's the third, am I correct? Right?
Today's the second, I believe.
Today's the second. So we're looking at the hypothetically, we say the governor signs it in 10 days, we'd make it the 12th. Correct? I want to make sure I'm consistent, okay? She signs it on the 12th, and then we're looking at no later than, so have 15 working days of the effective date, which would give it the 27th? And they were saying that no later than 30 days. So we're looking at what? October, the end, before the end of October? If you don't apply, you miss out of an opportunity to be taken care of by the governor of Guam? Is that what we're saying on this amendment? If not, please explain.
Senator Titigui, is that a question for the proffered amendment?
That's correct. That's why I asked earlier if the author would yield.
So would the author yield to the question?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. And thank you for that question, Senator. I had a conversation with both the author of this, of the legislation, as well as Department of Rev and Tax. Now, the bill already says it's a 30-day application process period. So by time it starts, when it does start, they have 30 days' window. Now, that's already part of the legislation. My amendment does nothing or touches anything to that effect. However, the good senator was talking about the time period. So if, he's absolutely right. If the governor waits for her, you know, her right to 10 days, 10 full days before it lapses into law, or she vetoes it, yeah, you're looking at about the middle of September, or even more so. And then what, if she does sign it or lapses into law, from that time, Rev and Tax has 15 days to implement the program, to get it off and running. And then on the 15th day, on the 15th working day, then they move forward with the program. People file in their applications. And as I mentioned during our lunch break, I had the opportunity to discuss with DRT that they're already, the applications and everything has been already started. In fact, there's just a few changes they need to make to the application, based on some of the amendments here that are bringing proffered to date. But the application's almost 85% complete and ready to roll. So once again, if the concern is the 30-day period for individuals to apply for this stimulus, that is currently in the bill. I do nothing to touch that. My amendment only talks about implementing it, getting it started, once the rules and regs are affected.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was very clear. I just want to remind my colleagues that the people of Guam are listening to this, and if any of them are affected by this, we want to make sure that they understand what is going on with this bill. That's all I wanted to make sure. I wanted to make sure it's clear. Because some folks may think that, and unfortunately, some do, they don't rush to get their application in. They take, they kind of like, not take their time, but the process is longer for some of them. And I just want to make sure that they all understand that we're making every effort to give them the opportunity to apply, be eligible, qualify, and receive this assistance. That's all I was asking. Thank you. Thank you to the author.
All right. Thank you, Senator San Agustin. Are there any other members that would like to discuss? Sorry. Senator Shelton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to register my support for the amendment and thank the author of the amendment with our discussion with DRT. This is a reasonable time to them, that they are able to get the program up and running, make any revisions to the application that is necessary, and begin in this 15-day time. And so I thank the author of the amendment to offer some, a little bit of a push to get us out there. And I know that DRT will do all they can to do it within the timeframe, and hopefully even sooner than that.
Anyone else? Senator Joe, are you? Okay. So Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have a question for the proffered amendment. So what do you think about making it a hard date of, like, say, the end of October? Should, you know, that kind of gives us more time. Should the governor act upon the bill sooner? And DRT gets it out sooner? So perhaps by, instead of a, I would like to maybe make an amendment to the amendment that the program shall end on a specific date? So that way, there's more time. Should the governor act on the bill sooner? And should DRT implement it at an earlier time than 15 days?
Are you asking someone to yield to that question?
Yes. I guess I'm asking that question to the proffer of the amendment.
Sponsor of the amendment. Do you yield to that question, Senator Titigui?
Yes, Madam Chair. You know, I, speaking with the Director at Rev and Tax, I asked her, house 10 days, and she asked that, could we make it 15? Because I think 15 would be, since they're already 85% completed with the program already at this point, you know, they, that would give them enough time. But to the question as far as, like, changing the date, Madam Chair, if I can, changing the date from, let's say, this is implemented from the governor, it's signed into law, like, tomorrow, then Rev and Tax has 15 days from that time to move forward? Is that the question? Or I'm, I'm really not sure exactly the date, date, that October 1st would make. That would extend it a little bit more than 15 days, if I'm not mistaken, and giving them Rev and Tax a little more time? Is that the intent of the amendment to the amendment?
Thank you, Senator Titigui. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, more, more, I'm looking at, how do we extend the application time? So maybe perhaps if, yes, if the governor signs it into law sooner, and DRT gets its 15 days, but, so that would move up the date potentially to an earlier date for the application period to end. But I'm just thinking if we can, you know, if there's some save, time savings by putting it at a hard date at the end of October, that would give more time for applications to come in.
Senator Perez, is this an amendment to her amendment, or just an amendment to the bill?
Yeah, perhaps. It wouldn't amend her amendment, correct? Because she's not amending that part of the bill. So.
All right. So, so on the amendment, the Titigui amendment?
Yeah, no questions about that, then. Thank you.
Anyone else on the Titigui amendment?
If I may, Madam Chair, if I may, now I understand what the good senator is trying to accomplish here. And it definitely would be something that I'd be amenable to. 30 days is quite short, especially in this pandemic, and, you know, issues are brought about where it's difficult for people to move from point A to point B. So yeah, I'd be very amenable to extending that 30-day period a little bit longer.
All right. On the Titigui amendment, any other speakers? If none, Senator Titigui, you may close. Oh, all right. So on the amendment, we're going to vote on that amendment right now. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, there was no objection to it?
Oh, sorry. If, is there any objection to the Titigui amendment? Hearing no objections, so ordered. And Senator Titigui, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am all.
Just a point of order, Madam Chair. You need to gavel down the motion.
I'm just trying to respect social distancing for her gavel. All right. Senator Titigui, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I have no more amendments at this point, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
All right. On the, on the bill, on the bill, Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have an amendment to proffer. It's pretty familiar to what was proffered before, when the bill was first discussed. And so being that, you know, really, you know, after this whole budget talks, it was quite clear that, you know, we were scrounging around for money for the various agencies. And, you know, really, I truly believe that the money for this program, as, you know, was intended, I feel, it should come from the CARES money. And, yeah, I mean, just like Pragam and Salapi, and, you know, these other programs that were created to subsidize, or at least mitigate some of the impacts that we have suffered from COVID. So I think this, you know, I think it falls in line with the intent. And, you know, I, you know, I think that to have, to pull money from the general fund, you know, special funds, you know, we saw that even with the conservative projections, it was very difficult to close some of these shortfalls in our agencies. And, you know, I don't have the conscience to allow, or to, to see that the funds can be pulled from these, these agencies at the time of great need. And considering, you know, you know, that we, you know, that not all the funds have been expended with the CARES money, you know, to me, it makes, you know, makes a lot of sense to proffer this amendment. So, so I guess I can, if I can read it, basically, it's an amendment to line 25 to 26, page 6 to 7, on Bill 392-35, as amended. So the part in Section 6, it's funding not sending it to the provision of law or rule or regulation. Imago Hagen Guahan is authorized to transfer $10 million plus any additional amount needed for administrative costs to DRT for the purposes of this act, as may be available from any coronavirus aid relief and economic security act. No local funds may be used for this program, as long as the CARES funds are available to encumber, obligate, or expend. Any funds transferred pursuant to this act shall only be used for the purposes of this act. The maximum amount allowed to be paid for this program is $10 million. So that's, the amendment is really to strike out the other sources of funding. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. On the Perez amendment, would anyone like to speak? Senator San Agustin?
I'd just like to make a general statement. I understand the intent of the striking, Madam Chair. But we've got to keep in mind on the very last line when it says, no local funds may be used for this program, as long as, as long as, very specific, word for it, CARES Act funds are available to encumber. The bill talks about 2020, not talking about anything else. So I just wanted to make sure we all understand that. All right? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I believe this issue was originally passed. And what we noted was, based on a district court ruling from 1978, essentially, they found that the government of Guam does not have the prerogative to appropriate federal funds. So the case is Wong versus Kamina, and it was in the District Court of Guam, under Judge Cristobal C. Duñez. So with that, Madam, speak, Madam Chair, I would object to this amendment, because I think fundamentally, it is not lawful to appropriate federal funds through Guam legislation.
Thank you, Senator Torres. On the amendment, on the Perez amendment, Senator Shelton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too object to this amendment. As was just mentioned, this was language drafted in the original Bill 367 while we were here in the Committee of the Whole. This was compromise language that all of us here in this body agreed to. The administration, BBMR, has assured us that they will use the CARES Act funding. They, and this bill, as it is, has language to ensure that they will use the CARES Act first, and other funding sources remain available after that. I think this is an unnecessary amendment, and I worry that it would lead to a veto of this entire bill, undoing the work that we're doing here today to assist the Department of Rev and Tax, and leaving them without the tools necessary and the protection necessary to carry out a successful program to help our people. So I object, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. On the Perez amendment, anyone else would like to speak? Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with this amendment. This law was actually lapsed into law, because the governor in her statement did tell us in the write-up what was earlier read. But basically, we have no authority over federal funds. So it's, you know, really, it, we know that we can't use general funds for this purpose. And it was, it's kind of, for the listening audience, that they're really listening, we don't have the money to do it. So it's going to be 100% of federal funds or nothing for me. And if the governor so chooses to veto this, that will be fine, because she has the executive authority to make this happen already for the people, and should have done so back in June. So I'm in favor of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. On the Perez amendment, would anyone else like to speak? If not, then Senator Perez, you may close on your amendment. Oh, sorry. What? Senator Titino? Did you want to speak on the amendment?
I do have a question. It was addressed to a degree earlier, but I just want to, because I'm still weighing things out in my mind, so I wanted to go through the information one more time. So although we've hopefully expedited when this program will start, and, and have changed the end date, the end date, I believe, is still March 31st, 2021. So, yeah, if at this time, the CARES Act money has to be used by December, the end of December of this year, I'm just wondering about that time period between December of this year and March. So if either the proffer of the amendment or the author of the bill could remind me again if, if these funds can be encumbered somehow by the end of December, so that even if the payment is continuing through March, that it's still following the intent of the bill, that the federal relief monies are used first and foremost?
Senator Perez, would you like to yield to that question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the, you know, that was a question that was asked of Director Shimizu, and I think she was unable to respond, provide a concrete response, because it's not her purview. It's really BBMR, and I think that has the answers to this, potentially. But, yeah, I think my understanding is that the money stops flowing at December 31st. I don't think that it can go beyond the deadline, just like the other federal programs. There is a hard deadline. So that's just my understanding. I can't give you the definitive answer right now, because I don't have that information. But, yeah, so basically, my understanding is that since we passed the amendment regarding the extension to March 31st, and that would probably mean it, the source of money would be local funds, rather than federal funds, unless there's another program to take its place.
Senator Shelton, would you like to yield to the question?
Yes, thank you very much. I think what we discussed earlier before our lunch break was that we are providing a timeframe of 30 days for this program to have an application period. And that 30 days will come and go before December 31st ever comes. And so we'll be able to see all of the qualified families who are applying for this program, and encumber these funds at that time. The March 31st deadline is a time of flexibility for the department to make the payments, to tie up any loose strings, and close up the program. But the funds will all be encumbered before that December 31st date.
Senator Titino, you have the floor.
Sijus Massey. And being able to hear that again one more time was important. I'm just wondering, in my mind, if we need some, something that, and maybe I'm missing it in the rereading of all of this, that if there's something that assures us that it will be encumbered by December 31st. I just, really, I just want the success of this program. I don't want us to have any stumbles. So I'm just looking to make sure that all the steps for success are in place. So I guess the, maybe the follow-up question would be, is, is there anything concrete that we have that the, it would be encumbered by December 31st? And if not, if we need to maybe have the author of the bill, or whomever, write an amendment to just guarantee that step?
Are you asking someone to yield to a question, or are you just stating that for the record?
Well, that would go to the author of the bill, if, if, if maybe she's had discussions about this being able to be encumbered, and whether the rest of us need that assurance in writing in the bill.
All right. Senator Shelton, do you yield to that question?
I missed the question, I'm sorry. Senator Marsh, if you can repeat it?
So the question is, is, it's very good to hear that the monies can be encumbered by December 31st. But we just know that there are so many unknowns right now, and we would hate for any missteps to happen. So is there any assurance that you have received, hopefully more formal than not, that it will be encumbered by December 31st? And I'm asking if perhaps writing an amendment to just have that assurance written into the bill would be helpful?
Thank you, Senator Marsh. No, I have not seen anything formal or in writing. The only reassurance I can give you is the discussions that we've had with Rev and Tax this morning in the Committee of the Whole, and my discussions with them over the last two months, assuring me that they will work on this program as quickly as possible. So Senator Telo just had an amendment, making this program active within 15 days of enactment. And in my discussion with the, with the director, she told me she will work even harder to do it before the 15 days are up. And so I know the commitment is there, as she said, the heart of DRT is there to assist and to serve the people of Guam. So that's the only reassurance I have. But if you do have that amendment, I welcome it.
All right. Senator Titino, on the bill? I'm sorry, on the amendment, on the Perez amendment?
Yeah. Well, and that is very helpful. And I think that us pinpointing down this timeline, let's, us making sure that it's expedited, or at least as expedient as possible, helps give us assurance, because if, if we go over that timeline once again, you know, that does provide, if it, if it ends by the end of October, it does provide all of November and all of December. It does provide two months to get these funds recognized and encumbered. So I am assured by that. But I thought it was important to go over it one more time. We, we want to make sure that there are not any stumbling, stumbling blocks or missteps, unintentional as they may be for this. I just, I just want to see the success of this program. Sijus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Titino. On the Perez amendment, is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, then Senator Perez, you may close.
No need to close. We can call for the vote.
So on the Perez amendment, it is to strike out A, B, C, D, from the original law, Section 6, which is in Section 5 of our bill, strike out the funding sources and leave the CARES Act as a funding source. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. The clerk says six votes. Amendment fails. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is, I believe that's all for now. Thanks. Okay, are there any other amendments by the body? Okay, no other amendments, so we are going to... So if there are no further amendments for Bill 392-35 as amended, the discussion for this bill, 392-35 as amended, is now closed. We are going to move to Bill 393-35 as substituted. Are there any amendments to this bill as substituted? I don't see any members raising their hands. So since there are no further discussions or amendments on Bill 393-35 as amended, as substituted, the discussion is now closed for this bill. Senator Shelton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill Number 392-35 LS, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed in the third reading file. And for Bill 393-35 LS, as substituted in the Committee of the Whole and further amended on the floor, be placed in the third reading file.
Okay, just to... Okay.
If I may, thank you. Bill Number, I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill 392-35, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed in the third reading file, and Bill 393-35, as substituted and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed in the third reading file.
Sorry, Senator Shelton, it was not amended, so Bill 393 was just substituted, I believe.
My apologies. 393-35, as substituted in the Committee of the Whole, be placed in the third reading file.
Okay, so Senator Tello Titigui, you have a question?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. I think when you moved 392 as substituted or on the floor as well, did, was it indicated too because we made amendments? Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
To clarify, 392 was not substituted, only amended on the floor. Bill 393 was substituted and not amended on the floor. I can offer both the motions in two separate... Okay, thank you.
Okay, so thank you.
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill 392-35 LS, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed in the third reading file.
On the motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill 392-35 is amended in the Committee of the Whole be placed in the third reading file, are there any objections? Seeing that there are no objections, motion passes.
I further move that...
Senator Shelton, you're further recognized.
Thank you. To rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation for Bill Number 393-35 LS, as substituted in the Committee of the Whole, to be placed in the third reading file.
Are there any objections to that motion? Seeing that there are no objections, on the motion to rise from the Committee on the Whole with the recommendation that Bill 393-35 is substituted in the Committee of the Whole be placed in the third reading file, seeing that there are no objection to that, motion carries. We stand in recess.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to dismiss the panel, Director Shimizu, and I want to thank her and her staff for diligently working on these rules and regs and providing such critical feedback to make the program run smoothly and effectively. And so, Sisus Massey, Daphne, and to DRT for all your hard work. Thank you very much to Department of Revenue and Taxation and Director Shimizu. Senator Perez, you're still are recognized at this time.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I wish to report back to the body that Bill 392-35 is deliberated and amended in the Committee of the Whole and Bill 393-35, as substituted and deliberated in the Committee of the Whole, with a recommendation to place on the third reading file.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. At this time, I know there's several, Senator Theresa... Sisus Massey. Colleagues, Senator Pito Terlai, I will recognize you at this time. Consigliere, put for vote.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And Dr. Sisus Massey. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to go back to motion.
On the motions, notwithstanding the House rules, to go back to motions, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. I'm going to address you, Senator Pito Terlai. You are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place the nomination of Joseph S. Carbolito to serve as Director of the Department of Corrections onto the session agenda.
On the motion, colleagues, to place the nomination of Joseph S. Carbolito to serve as Director of the Department of Corrections onto the session agenda, are there any objections? Senator Viskel Lee, I will recognize you at this time.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, just a point of information for the body. The committee report for Mr. Carbolito was placed, has gone through the Committee on Rules process and was placed online yesterday. So it's available for the public to view if they would like to. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator Lee, on the motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Sisus Massey, Senator Pito.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Senator Lee. Madam Speaker, thank you also. Madam Speaker, I move to place the...
No, no, no. Senator, I'll go ahead and come back to you, Senator Terlai. Let me address the Legislative Secretary first, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Legislative Secretary, I will recognize you at this time.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to place the nomination of Zenon E. Bellinger to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors on the session agenda.
On the motion to place the nomination of Zenon E. Bellinger to serve as a member of the AP Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors on the session agenda, are there any objections? Senator Lee, you are recognized again.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, just for a point of information for the body, the committee reports for Zenon Bellinger, Lucy Alcorn, and Donald Weekly Senior, all for the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors, have all been approved by the Committee on Rules and been placed online for, I think it was several weeks ago, they might have been placed online. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Senator Lee. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Legislative Secretary, you're still recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place the nomination of Lucy M. Alcorn to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Authority Board of Directors on the session agenda.
Sisus Massey, Legislative Secretary, on the motion to place the nomination of Lucy M. Alcorn to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority's Board of Directors on the session agenda, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Legislative Secretary, you're still recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place the nomination of Donald I. Weekly Senior to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors on the session agenda.
On the motion to place the nomination of Donald I. Weekly Senior to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors on the session agenda, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Theresa Terlai, thank you, Legislative Secretary. Senator Theresa, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of June G. Borja to serve as a member of the Guam Peril Board onto the session agenda. The committee report for June Borja has been online.
On the motion to place the nomination of June G. Borja to serve as a member of the Guam Peril Board of, the Guam Peril Board on the session agenda, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Theresa Terlai, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Nadine T. Cepeda to serve as a member, the Marriage and Family Therapist Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, onto the session agenda. The committee report for Nadine T. Cepeda has been online.
Sisus Massey, Senator Theresa, on the motion to place the nomination of June G. Borja to serve as a member of the Guam...
Nadine Cepeda. Nadine Cepeda.
I do apologize. Nadine T. Cepeda to serve as a member of the Marriage and Family Therapist Representative on the Board of Allied Health Examiners on the session agenda, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Legislative Secretary, I'll still recognize you now.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to place the nomination of Lawrence J. M. Alcarro to serve as a member of the Guam Education Board on the session agenda.
On the motion to place the nomination of Lawrence J. M. Alcarro to serve as a member of the Guam Educational Board on the session agenda, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Is there anyone else on motions? If not, colleagues, we are now in legislative concurrence. I will go back. Senator Pito Terlai, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Public Safety, War and Safety, Military and Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council, Infrastructures, and Public Transit, the nomination of Joseph S. Carbolito to serve as Director of the Department of Corrections with the recommendation to confirm.
Sisus Massey, Senator Pito Terlai. On the motion to place the nomination of Joseph S. Carbolito to serve as Director of Department of Corrections into the voting file, are there any objections? If not, motion carries. Legislative Secretary Shelton, you are recognized at this time.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Air Transportation, and Statistics Research and Planning the nomination of Zenon E. Bellinger to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the nomination to place Zenon E. Bellinger to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors into the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing none, hearing none? Motion carries. Secretary Shelton, you're still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Air Transportation, and Statistics Research and Planning the nomination of Lucy M. Alcorn to serve as a member of the AP Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination of Lucy M. Alcorn to serve as a member of the AP Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors into the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Legislative Secretary, you're still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Air Transportation, and Statistics Research and Planning the nomination of Donald I. Weekly Senior to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of Donald I. Weekly Senior to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors into the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries at this time. I'd recognize Senator Teres Terlai.
Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land, and Justice the nomination of June G. Borja to serve as a member of the Guam Parole Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of June G. Borja to serve as a member of the Guam Parole Board into the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Teres Terlai, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land, and Justice the nomination of Nadine T. Cepeda to serve as a member, Marriage and Family Therapist Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners with the recommendation to do confirm.
Sisus Massey, Senator Teres Terlai. On the motion to place the nomination of Nadine T. Cepeda to serve as a member, Marriage and Family Therapist Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners into the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Legislative Secretary Shelton, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Air Transportation, and Statistics Research and Planning the nomination of Lawrence J. M. Alcarro to serve as a member of the Guam Education Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
Sisus Massey, Legislative Secretary. Colleagues, on the motion to place the nomination of Lawrence J. M. Alcarro to serve as a member of the Guam Educational Board into the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, if I may? We've exhausted everything on the agenda. And if you can just put us into recess for voting at four?
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Senator Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Kelly Marsh Taichino, you are recognized at this time.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I motion to have us go into recess until 4:00 p.m. in order to vote.
That motion, without any objection, we will be in recess to 4:00 this afternoon. Sisus Massey, colleagues.